I'd like to call the meeting to order if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda or any subtractions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Eyes have it. Okay, first up we have a public hearing and discussion. Bill, I need to open a public hearing for this, or?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll open a public hearing, discuss the Mindot Lions liquor license.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a brief introduction. The Lions are requesting a temporary liquor license for the Columbus Fall Fest. They'll have a beer garden located on the premises. In order to do that, we needed to investigate the liquor license. It turns out, all background checks came back fine. And then also, attached to this is a very simple, short lease for the facility. In order to have the liability coverage, they had to lease the grounds, the public works building grounds. So that's what's in your packets.
That's in the addendum.
Yes. A1 and so on.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Do I need to open this up to the public then?
Yes, you do.
Any public have any comment? Okay, here and none. I'd entertain a motion to approve or deny this liquor license request.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Bill got it.
The recommended conditions are on the second page regarding execution of the lease and then meeting the requirements and conditions of the license.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Eyes have it. All right, next up we have the Mindot construction documents on page five through seven of your packets. Elizabeth, you want to frame that up?
Ryan Cunningham is here this evening with us to talk about the construction documents. In this particular case, they're asking to use the property for construction. And Ryan, if you want to come up to the table. The documents that you have before you are the construction, or the right to construct documents, because they have not purchased the property yet, although yesterday I did meet with their real estate person and so there is, the offer has been presented to the city, it's not been presented to you, but we do have an offer for the property at this time. Ryan, if you just want to explain briefly what this is about, that would be great.
Sure. So we always knew that there was going to be some property from Columbus that was needed. It was part of the layout that we presented way back when, for municipal consent, there was those areas. Good news for the council is through the development of the process, they've eliminated the pond down by Hornsby. I don't know if everybody on the council is aware of that or not. That pond, through, I don't know, I mean, they, through the design-build process, they were able to look at it, put some of the water in different areas, they were able to eliminate that pond that has been approved by Rice Creek Watershed District. When that change was made, it forced us to go back and restart the right-of-way process because now we have to reappraise the new property. It's significantly less from the city and get new, put all that back together. And so, in the original contract, we had given the contractor the date of September 1st and for the property, and we had asked him to look at removing that pond, and they did, and they did that. However, given our timelines, the first document we need signed tonight is just a permit to construct. Basically, that gives us right to get in there and start working in those areas while we iron out the details of the permanent acquisition. So basically, it's a, all it really says is that you give Mindot and his contractor the authority to go in there, and I don't know if you go back to that map, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I'm having a, I'm having a little problems with my computer right now.
It's that little yellow area, basically, that was showing on that plaque. And that, and what that allows them to do is to get set up to put the traffic on the north side of the bridge for the winter.
Bill, does that affect our contract that we have on the land?
It does not. You mean, the, no, that's further to the north.
Nothing to worry about there?
No.
The northeast quadrant?
Yeah.
Area? There's a small triangle that Mindot is looking to take, and we are asking them just to minimize that as much as possible. Very small triangle on the northeast quadrant.
Right, but I mean, we have that under contract, so the question is, how does that affect that?
Yeah, I don't believe there's a conflict, because I believe the contracting company is to the north of that area. Is that correct, Dennis?
You're talking about the rental from Schaefer?
Right. Schaefer Contracting.
Is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah. It's under, right, but there's the other pieces under contract too, isn't it? The whole thing?
No, it's subject to public easements, so.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
Okay, that's my question. Perfect. Okay. All right. Anything else you want to add?
That's basically it. The, they did, Dennis and Elizabeth did ask us to minimize that taking. I think it's a difference of 1,500 square feet roughly, and there's nothing we can do at this time, because time is our enemy. I mean, we're right up against it. So, I mean, what we can do is, what I did offer to do is, first of all, I don't know if the contractor is using that space or not, because this is what we gave them to work off of, and then they do the final plans. And so their plans might be different than our plans. But if the property isn't being used at the end of the project, we can reconvey that back to the city. And there's just a process, and it takes some time to do that. But we just don't, we can't back up at this time and go back through. What we have to do is, if we did it now, we'd have to reappraise the property, and we'd have to also do a replating of the property, which would take significant amount of time, which we just don't have. And so we kind of just need to keep things moving.
This qualifies as an easement, then?
Correct.
Right, the right-of-entry is not an easement, but what would follow when we negotiate the purchase would be an easement, a permanent easement.
Okay.
Ryan, my understanding is, according to the plot, it's not an easement, it's a parcel taking. It's a parcel. You're...
We are acquiring easement, Bill's exactly right. We're acquiring easement as the second phase of this. This is a right-of-entry permit to just get going.
Okay.
And then those negotiations happen after the fact. So, the document we're asking for tonight is just that allows the contractor to get in there and do what he needs to do to get, to basically build the project. It just, all it does is allow the city to then enter those negotiations later. So it basically puts the negotiation on the end, on the back end of it.
But it's a permanent right-of-way taking, it's not an easement?
It's not an easement, right?
Yes, there's both. There's permanent easement and temporary easement, correct.
So, how does that work with our other, I mean, that's under contract now, right?
Yeah, this is, since the government could take the land by eminent domain, we'll get the consent of the property owner. There is a condemnation clause in the purchase agreement.
Okay.
With the purchaser. So, I don't see a problem. But obviously, ultimately, the Mindot could take it by eminent domain, which should not be necessary.
Anyway, so.
Should not be necessary.
All right. Anybody make a motion to approve this temporary permit to construct?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
How does that work with, is that negotiated in the payment, you know, the final payment of the whole thing? Or does that come out of their end of it afterwards, or how would that?
It's a separate payment for land acquisition, so it's completely outside of any other...
So that would go to the city?
Yes.
And we would reduce that to the potential buyer, then?
The land that the buyer would buy would be slightly smaller.
Okay.
But the paperwork, the paperwork outlines that we were taking right-of-way, it was always upfront that we were taking right-of-way.
Correct.
This project was always upfront. They always knew that there was right-of-way going to be involved with both Mindot and Hornsby Street, because at the time, we weren't quite sure exactly where Hornsby Street was going to be either, and so that is in the purchase agreement.
That was our right-of-way, not Mindot right-of-way, so, but they're both covered. We're good.
Right.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Eyes have it. Anything else going on in the project that we should know about?
They're continuing to work, as you guys obviously know. We'll be at the Columbus Days. We have some photos that we'll have, if there's power, I don't know, we got to talk, Elizabeth, to make sure that there's power out there. But we have a computer that we can kind of do that. We have some other things that they have planned. I think they're going to have, just so everybody, I think Zan and Associates is our public affairs folks, and I think she said she was going to try to do a 3D model of what a DDI looks like. She had somebody in the office who had an arts background, so, you know, that folks could kind of see how it works and see what it's going to look like when it's done. Other than that, yeah, they're just, they're moving right along, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up, Sheriff's Office. Brian, you want to come up?
It's in the agenda. It's right here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It is Brian First with the Sheriff's Office and my annual contract pitch.
So in your packet, hang on just a minute, in your packets you have, Anoka County Sheriff's Office handout, and in that handout is the contract. There's both the 2018 contract and the 2019 contract in that, because usually someone asks me about both in there. And then also, we had Jeff C. Martin look at calls at the last meeting. The call information was shared with us, and so he took all that information and broke it down by times and such, and so the pie charts at the end are the calls for services and what times.
Okay.
So in comparing your 18 contract with the proposal for 19, I believe it works out to be a roughly 4% increase from last year's contract. The majority of that, if not all of that increase is based on contracts, for the deputies' contract negotiation for the 2019, their wage contracts. They went up a fair amount, and then that is what is the increase to the contract. There's no additional ask for any additional coverage or any other fees, but most of that is based on, or the increase you're going to see is based on the wages.
Okay.
Looking through, I know, talking to Elizabeth on the, what we provided last year was 12-hour coverage, which was covered by two deputies working a 2:30 to 2:30 shift. There was an ask to modify that for this 19. The, working with Patrol, they would suggest not to, but they will accommodate the request for 12:30 to 12:30. If that's for one of the cars, one of the shifts will remain 2:30 to 2:30. Pulled up January 1st to today's date, pulled additional reports, and I'll provide that. And I think it's comparable to what you had been, had found. But it does show that by cutting those two hours off in the evening, we do miss out on a fairly big chunk of what's considered the priority calls or the urgent calls. And that would be one of the drawbacks. I think you, your deputy is here when those calls are there. And then, just for bidding purposes or for coverage, it would be the only 12:30 to 12:30 contract that we have in the county, or shift that we have in the county. And so for holding people over or getting people to cover that, it will just be a little more difficult.
Okay. Elizabeth, we wanted to do that because, there was a reason for that, I forgot what it was.
So looking at the calls for service, if you look at the pie chart and you look at where the calls were, and we've seen this before, so if you, if you look at where the least amount of calls are for service, you'll see it's, there's 76% of the calls between 6:30 in the morning and 10:30 at night, and only 24% between 10:30 and 6:30 in the morning. That's overall. So you had 246 calls from 6:30 to 10:30 at night, 76 calls from 10:30 to 6:30 in the morning. If you further break it down, which is the next, which is the next pie chart, you'll see that from 6:30 to 2:30, you have 103 calls, and then 2:30 to 10:30, it's 143. And again, from 10:30 to 6:30, there's only 76. So there's a fair amount of calls that you're missing, that are missing, that's fairly significant through midday for us. But if you further break it down and say, okay, where are the calls, you can see that you have 6% very early in the morning, 15%, but that you do have 26% of your calls in the middle of the, you know, day, that 2:30 to 6:30. And then you have 17% both from 10:30 at night to 2:30 in the morning, and 10:30 in the morning to 2:30 in the afternoon. So, we had always indicated we wanted 2:30 to 2:30 at least one shift, but we were saying, okay, right now, anybody who, you know what I mean, you have 17% of your calls from 10:30 to 2:30, we're not accommodating any of them except with the countywide. By having an opportunity to have another shift, at least you're covering half of them. And we found this, this is not the only, you know what I mean, data that we found this to happen. So it's really, you know, it's, according to the contract, it's up to the Sheriff's Department to determine what shifts are best based on calls. This is their data that we looked at, and I had asked them if there was some way that we could have a little bit of variety in that. And, but at the end of the day, the council, you can, you know what I mean, the sheriff's has indicated to you, it's hard on their schedule, they don't have anybody else on that schedule. They used to have a night power, day power kind of thing. When they went to 12-hour shifts, they kind of changed up the whole schedule. So, again, there's scheduling issues, so there is a decision to be made. It's either, you know what I mean, based on convenience, service, what they're indicating to you, they feel is the best fit. We've had questions on calls before, so Jeff, with his background, was able to look at the types of calls. He was a police sergeant for 13 years, so he knows what they all mean, and he took the data, and this is what he came up with.
Okay. One of the things that came up at the... Fire board meeting? Is the responses to medicals, and they were, without echo, they were concerned that there's a whole lot of cancel calls in Columbus, because...
Who's canceling them?
I think the 911 operators are sending both fire and police or something at the same time, or, remember how that went, Mark?
Yeah, so, we have a much higher cancellation rate than the Forest Lake area.
Yeah.
So what they're saying...
Who's canceling?
This is what's happening. So, you have a call, and the Columbus deputy is not on. What the dispatcher is doing is they're calling out fire and police at the same time, because they don't know who's going to be able to respond quickest. And so when they do that, they end up, the call goes out, and then when, and then if a police officer gets there, either from, coming from Lynnwood or another adjacent community, then you end up canceling the fire department. But what's happening is you're calling out the fire department when there's not a deputy here. And so what they're saying is, is they're getting, I forget what the number was, but pretty significant number of calls.
They're worried about the morale of waking the guy up in the middle of the night and then not having anything to do.
Okay.
So, kind of for nothing.
So who would I contact with the fire department?
Al Newman was supposed to have gotten ahold of you, Al Newman, fire chief?
He's never, I know we had talked on another event, and you said he was going to call me, and I haven't.
Yep.
Maybe you might want to reach out to him.
Okay.
Good.
Because the central communication does the dispatching, so the deputies are, were not controlling who gets called out.
Right.
That's the central communication, who...
Yeah, there's some question on whether it's a medical, and it's just the ambulance, or whether the fire gets called for lift assists, and there's all these, they had it all broken down.
Okay.
I have that with me today. But it'd be good if you could help us get that figured out, because there's a bit of a problem there.
Okay. It's Al?
Al Newman. I have his number. Give it to you. Okay, so, that in mind, are we in the business of approving this contract tonight, or what was the plan?
The contract is before you. If you have more questions, you can, I can certainly put it on, you know what I mean, a different meeting. I know that it's their intent that you act on...
So, I mean, with our new, how many million dollar computer system, are we able to get the call proactive time calculated directly, or is it still?
Well, it's still, you know, the same formula that you don't like.
So, nor closer to what the real proactive time is.
It's, yeah, the, yeah, not to your liking.
It's still the manual system, it's still, you know what I mean, it's still, yeah, they still do the same, the same reports.
It, yeah, it's the, it's the same formula used, based on that...
National average.
Based on that formula, you're at 35.5, or, yeah, 35.50%.
Mark?
Do we have to decide right now about the hours for the contract? Is that part of the one deal, or is that something?
As soon as, as soon as their bid books go out, they don't like to reissue the bid books, and I do believe that your bid books are coming out shortly.
Yeah, it's reaching that time of year. I talked to the Patrol Commander today, and he said if that's what you want, we'll do it. As long as one of the shift, one of the shifts is going to be the 2:30 to 2:30.
Yeah.
If you want to do the other one, he, you know, he just, I sat with him today just to prepare a little bit, and it's, it's not going to be a shift that people want, because when you, when your shift ends at 12 or 12:30, that's when things are starting to ramp up. You're getting the calls, even with your stats, that 11:30 mark, that's when the calls come in. So you're working a 12-hour shift, and there's a good chance that many of those shifts are going to, that person's going to be held over, and then starts again at 12:30 in the morning. It's not, it's going to be a shift that will probably get a junior person to fill, because it's not going to be a sought-after, a 12:30 to 12:30, 12-hour shift is not going to be a highly sought-after shift.
Why would you change it? Why would you want to move it to 12:30? Why not leave it? Because all their stuff happens 2:30 in the morning, I mean, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. Why would you want to move it to 12?
Was that, was that when all those...
Because the pie chart shows that you also have things happening from 10:30 to 12:30. You have as much, you have as much activity happening in the morning as you do in the after, in the AM as in the PM. But again, it...
Different kind of thing, though.
Right.
Yes, and so, which is why we're seeing it...
It doesn't show us what the, what the calls are.
I agree, which is why this gives us more coverage, and you serve more of your people with different types of calls. The 2:30 to 2:30, you're right, will serve certain sector of, you know what I mean, people, all of the calls.
Well, we already know that the criminals move around after 11:30, 12 o'clock, because they know they're gone.
They're never gone, they've always marked a 2:30 for years now.
Most of the calls that I ever put into the police, Sheriff, is in the mornings, when I come to the garage and find something missing.
Well, exactly, but isn't that kind of after the fact?
Yeah, I mean, it's gone.
That's why they're...
It's got to be reported.
Well, that's why they're getting busy at 9, 10 o'clock in the morning, everybody's calling.
Yep.
Whatever. So the 2:30 shift, 2:30 to 2:30, or whatever it is, is more desirable?
It's, yeah, it's more desirable.
Well, if you've never had the shift from 12:30 to 12:30, how would you know that?
Because it's what he said, they're going to be held over for overtime, and then they're...
They'll hold over for overtime now. I have deputies here that are here for 16 hours, because they have to go to courts, and then they have to go to SWAT training, and they have to do everything else. So, we have deputies now that work that many hours.
Up to you guys, I could go either way. I think it's a good idea to switch it up, but I don't know.
I think we should switch it up one year and see if things changes, and you can always go back next year if nobody's satisfied with it.
Yeah, it'd be good to try, I mean, if you want, if it's okay. What do you guys think, Bill?
I'm, I'm on the fence, so either way, I, you know.
Like, so you try it.
Try it, yeah. So I think that's kind of the consensus, we'll take the one shift and switch it. All right. So, Elizabeth, were we looking for a motion to approve this, or is it just?
Unless there's, unless, with the contract, we're talking about 2019 contract, unless there's something that you want us to look into, or there's something that you have questions on that you want us to look at, I mean, I can bring it back to the next meeting.
I don't really see it. Do you guys see it?
Nope, see nothing.
I don't see, I think we should expedite this and just get it voted up. Someone want to make a motion to approve the 2019 contract?
It's all moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Welcome back.
All right. Thank you.
See you on the 22nd.
See you then.
What?
Hopefully we have nice weather like tonight.
Yeah, beautiful out there. Why are we here? All right.
Maybe I can come on my own time and have a drink.
There you go.
It's legal.
It'll be happening. Okay, discussion on the resolution on the 2018 A bond sale project. Elizabeth, do you want to go over what happened there?
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Tammy.
Tammy?
As she has a good overview. However, before I turn it over to Tammy, we do have some items to go over, and that is, at our meeting on July 25th, it's the only time that I can think of that we only had three people at that meeting, and when we looked at approving some resolutions for projects, it was, I did not realize that we needed a four-fifths vote. And so, in light of that, our bond counsel has indicated to us that we should, in order to correct the record, to readopt those resolutions prior to Tammy talking about the bond sale. So, at this time, what would be before you is the resolutions to correct the record, and they are on page...
A6, 8, 8 to 44. Okay, so you guys see the resolution on page 8?
Just need a number, if you've got it.
Yeah, the first one's 1821.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve or deny Resolution 1821?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Four people said aye. We're good. Okay.
And then the next resolution is 1822?
Yep.
Someone want to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. 1822?
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Eyes have it. Okay. All right.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Tammy Umdow with Northland Securities. Before you consider approval of the resolution awarding these bonds, let me tell you a little bit about the bond sale. So the city issued on September 6th pursuant to the resolution that the council adopted back on August 18th, 4,240,000 of general obligation improvement bonds for the purpose of financing 1.7 million of utility improvements, I'll call that new money, and the balance of it, the 2.5 or 2.54 million, was for refunding the 2007 A and B bonds for interest rate savings only. The sale went very well. As part of that process, the city did go through a rating review process on Moody's Investor Service, did affirm the city's A1 rating. It was a very good discussion with the rating agency, and I think the results were favorable, and that helped with the final interest rates. You have in your packet, and Elizabeth will have to tell you which page, she has it up on the screen, a bond sale summary. I will be brief. I will be brief. So, the paramount of the bonds was reduced from what you had set on August eighteenth of four million, three-ninety to four million, two-forty, because the bonds were priced with premium of a hundred-and-forty-six thousand approximately. The true interest cost came in just under what was estimated. We had estimated two-point-nine-seven percent in August. It came in at two-point-nine-two, the final. The savings with respect to the refundings were slightly greater. We had estimated about fourteen thousand, two-seventy-five, came in at almost sixteen thousand, five-hundred for the two-thousand-seven A bonds. And for the two-thousand-seven B bonds, the interest savings comparative was estimated at a little over sixty-two thousand, came in at about seventy thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven, to be exact. So, very favorable results. The mayor and Elizabeth did sign the bond purchase agreement on September sixth last week, following the pricing of the bonds. So, you have before you this evening consideration of the resolution awarding the bonds. With that, mayor, council, I'd be happy to answer any, answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any question?
There's only one minor edit to the, if you look on page eighteen and nineteen, to the resolution and the extract of minutes, and that is, there's, in your additions, there's a page in there.
A six.
A six, and it, there's just one, there's the word refunded added to the resolution.
Okay.
So.
Resolution number?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, when you adopt the resolution, just note that change on page nine of the transcript, A six, of your agenda. And it would be eighteen-twenty-three.
Someone want to make a motion to adopt resolution eighteen-twenty-three with the changes on A six?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, planning commission report. Who do we have for that? Did they meet?
Sorry?
Planning commission, did they meet?
The planning commission did not meet. It was, the meeting was canceled.
All right. Public open forum, anyone here for public open forum? Why not?
Paul Pescar, one-eight-three-three-nine, Tulane. Mayor, council, I was just wondering if we could get a quick update on John Plakert.
Okay. Dennis?
Yeah, reached out to them last week. We'll be setting up a meeting for a final onsite inspection. Hopefully, it's going to be this week, it might be next week. And then, see what, what they have in store for basically the closure.
So, have they turned in their final plan, or that's kind of what you're hoping to get out of it?
Yeah, I think it'll be based on the discussion we have out there. They have not turned in anything as of yet.
Okay.
You haven't seen any trucks or anything, right?
No.
Stopped?
No, we looked over the fence last week, and there's nothing going on.
There may be traffic, you know, for him finishing up those, the site improvements that he's doing, but not hauling.
Okay.
But Paul, there's nothing going on.
Nothing that I can see. I mean, there's still like a huge stockpile. I don't know if it's topsoil or what, towards the back. You can see when you're looking in the main gate there, but.
Lot of what?
Weeds.
Weeds. Probably dirt, probably.
Yeah, there was a, a topsoil pile, and I'm not sure if they've spread that out yet.
Okay, so Dennis, their plan will be building, making it ready for lots, or that's what they're going to try to come up with?
I'm not a hundred percent sure what their ultimate plan is.
What is their plan? Bill, what is their plan supposed to entail?
Mr. Mayor and Council, the, there is no updated closure plan. The documents, the interim use permit provided that they would come forward with a closure plan at this timeframe as they wound up operations. We've had one discussion, or maybe two, about single-family lots, but they were trying to figure out how to maximize the number of lots, and we have not seen any plans since our last meeting, which was probably March.
March, it is, we've had some discussions with forestland, forestland contracting to have a follow-up meeting. It is their understanding that they will complete the permit process, and it is their understanding is, is that there is no timing on a closure plan, that the agreement that they had for the interim use permit does not say that they have timing, and right now they, they feel that they are going to finish doing the, all the conditions for the wetland permit, but they're not going to continue with a subdivision at this time.
So, the haul-out roads have been lowered but not fully removed? Is that what I heard you say last time?
The ones that were separating the cells?
Yeah.
Had been excavated so that, and I haven't been out there recently, but the, when the water level's back to normal, it basically covers all those.
Yeah, so it will look like a pond.
Submerged benches.
So, what, what's the timeframe on that, Bill? Do you remember?
Well, it was our expectation when we wrote the interim use permit that they would do the closure plan concurrent with the wrap-up of operations. Obviously, we have a difference in opinion on that. In any event, for them to realize any value out of that property, they will have to come forward with some sort of reclamation and subdivision. Otherwise, it'll just simply stay in its current state.
Yeah.
But the operations, the mining operations have ceased.
All right.
All right.
But the wet, the, the wetlands, the slopes on the ponds and all that, that's all done?
My understanding it is, but I'll go, when I, when we go back out there physically, we'll see what remains, if there's any stockpiles that need to be spread out yet.
Because I, when we sat here and talked about this, I thought the pull-out date, they were supposed to have all that done, just like Bill said.
Yeah, I don't recall the conditions of the permit, other than the, you know, the mining excavations had to be done by a certain time.
Will you be out there next week? That was a while ago, but.
I'd have to look at the conditions to determine that.
We'll have staff re-review that, and you're going to, you said you're going to plan to be out there next week, or?
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from.
Okay, so we'll be on top of it.
Update next time.
Thanks, Paul.
Great, thanks.
Yep. Anyone else for public open forum? Okay, here none, we'll move on to the motion for the resolution calling for public. What are we trying to do there, Elizabeth?
We have an application before us in the, in the coming weeks. There is a typo in the legal description for Hornsby Street, and there's a preliminary plat that will be scheduled sometime in October for a public hearing. And in order to have that vacation application go through the process, we have to call for a public hearing, and there's a certain amount of days that the notice has to be published. And in this particular case, you need a resolution calling for that hearing. This will start that process so that the preliminary plat and the vacation will happen at the same time. And the public hearing notice is on the second page. There is a typo to it. The, it's not to vacate, vacate a portion of Camp Three, it's, it's actually to vacate a portion of Hornsby Street. The legal description is correct, however. So, this, for a vacation, you're required to do fourteen days' notice, and, which is different departure than normal notice, which is ten days. You have to publish twice, and so it is quite a long period of time. And I think they do that because you're vacating public right-of-way, and so you give a good opportunity for public to be put on notice. And in this case, it was a typo, and so the road, although it's located where it's located, that's not what the legal description says.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, we will essentially get back the necessary right-of, the corrected right-of-way as part of the plat document. So, this vacates the, the portion that's outside the right-of-way, or the road is traveled and maintained, and then when the plat comes through, we will essentially get back what we need. We will not file the vacation until we make sure the plat is, is done and finalized.
So, this would be resolution eighteen-twenty-four? Page forty-five. Do you have a motion to adopt that resolution, by anyone?
Make a motion to adopt resolution eighteen to S two-four.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Eyes have it. Okay, engineers report?
Mayor, council, just a brief update on a few of the projects going on. So, you heard Ryan Cottington from Mendat on the thirty-five design-build project. If you've been out there, you've seen they've actually started grading on the south side of Horn, of ninety-seven, and on that northeast corner a little bit. I believe they're trying to get some of those improvements done this year yet. The ramp closures that are part of the project won't be happening until 2019, where they're, the contract, they're allowed to close the on-and-off ramps for up to forty days. And they'll be dropping the old part of the bridge also for, on a weekend.
In 2019?
I believe so. The county's project, as you've also noticed, has the bypass in place, so those are two separate projects. Anoka County's project, which is from Holiday West, basically, and they'll be building that roundabout, and expect that to be completed this fall yet. We have a meeting on Friday with some of the other stakeholders, Mendat, the County Watershed District on Hornsby Street, which we're in the process of red, of designing the realignment. And that project also includes some of the improvements on ninety-seven going east, and it includes the signal, proposed signal at Hornsby and ninety-seven. So, we'll be getting, the plan for that is advertise that project this winter, February, March, and that'll be under, be under construction next year as well. Couple other ones, Development Project, Priner's Preserve, they should be paving the Ware Course, Potemnus Ware Course tomorrow, and in the development. And then there's some of the patch, the two patches on one-forty-seventh have some settlement. They'll be fixing those next week, if all goes well with the weather and the schedule. And then we'll be meeting on Friday just internally to start discussions on the 2019 street improvements, which would be Notre Dame and one-eighty-first, and considering neighborhood meetings for some of the residential streets in the area to see if they want to join in on the, on the project. And also, one-one-sixty-fifth we're looking at. There's also a, a DNR grant for State Park Road accounts. So, if you have a wildlife management area or area at the end of a roadway, such as at the west end of one-eighty-first, we'll be applying to see if we can get any DNR funding to help with the paving of the roadway.
The bypass that's going around the roundabout, is there no way for us to repurpose that grade they're putting in there and get it, get a file for something to get a permit? Because it's a temporary watershed permit, but it'd be a shame for them to tear that all out, I mean.
I mean, it, it's not in alignment with our future proposed roadway, but it kind of cuts through at an angle on the city parcel and the other parcel there.
No, no residual use for that road?
Maybe right, the piece would be right at the northern end of the roundabout potentially. We can check into that.
I think we should. It's a shame to tear it all out, and we have to pay to put it back in.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I had.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council, I have two items tonight. The first is in the development agreement for the ACIS Hotel is in your additions. The, there was an original development agreement in the main agenda, but since then, we've had a couple of conversations back and forth with the developers' representative. And so, I'll just walk you through in, starting on page A-seven. I'll walk you through a couple of changes that have been made to this document from, as compared to the one in your packets. So, on page A-nine, which is three of the development agreement, there was concern that the city not undertake maintenance of stormwater improvements without necess, without notice to the owner, which is fine. In most cases, the owner of the stormwater ponds undertakes maintenance of those ponds, and this is a kind of a super remedy if, if no maintenance is done. So, it'd be very unusual, other than an emergency, that there would not be written notice, so we just added that. On page A-ten, which is four of the development agreement, there was a concern about waiving a right of appeal of any costs for those maintenance items. So, we struck the waiver of appeal rights. That's our standard language, but I can understand why a property owner would want to have some ability to appeal assessments. And then finally, towards the end of the document, we added a provision on page A-thirteen, which is seven of the development agreement, that if there, if we have to pursue, pursue remedies in court, that our fees would be reasonable and as would our costs.
There is such thing as reasonable attorney fees?
I, I will leave that to your debate.
Didn't know that existed.
I believe there are, but I might be the only person in the room who thinks that, so. So, those are the changes that we worked through with the developers' representative, who was here this evening, if there are any questions of him, Mr. Seibert. But if not, then the document's ready for approval, and that will help, help keep the project on schedule.
Okay, anybody have any concerns, questions?
Is he going to, is he going to?
No, no.
I didn't entertain a motion to approve or deny this. What is this?
Development agreement for the ACIS Hotel.
It's all moved. Approved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Daley. You have a second?
Okay, I'll do second then.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And I believe you're looking at a fall construction start still?
Nice. Still do the pilings?
Yes.
All right. You have one more thing, Mr. Jefferson, or no?
One more item. You asked that we bring back a potential moratorium on further permitting of billboards in the city of Columbus. So, you have two items towards the back of the agenda, and the first is a resolution which would order a study. And by ordering a study, you would ask the planning commission to look at whether there should be further limits on billboards, whether you would, that's on page A-twenty-three of your handout. So, that, that resolution basically calls for a study, and that's required by state statute to ensure that the purpose of the moratorium is to preserve the planning process.
Okay.
And the second item, which is related, is an ordinance. It's called an interim ordinance. A lot of times, it's called a moratorium ordinance, but the way it's referred to in statute is an interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of permits for billboards. As we always do, there's a possible hardship waiver, so if somebody feels aggrieved, they can come before the council and say that the moratorium works a hardship on them. They'd have to have a pretty significant reason and rationale for a hardship, but I, I point that out because it's required to have that type of provision in the moratorium ordinance.
Okay, anybody have any questions on resolutions at sixteen-twenty-five?
It's eighteen.
Is it typo in here then?
Yep, eighteen-twenty-five.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to adopt it, my resolution eighteen-twenty-five?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution eighteen-twenty-five.
Second.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. So, we have to do two of them, or?
There's an ordinance behind it, that's the actual moratorium. So, the first item ordered the study, the second item adopts the moratorium.
Twenty-six?
It's eighteen oh-three.
Eighteen oh-three. Okay, someone want to make a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen oh-three?
Eighteen oh-three? Did you say the ordinance?
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Eyes have it. Okay, anything else?
That's what I have, thank you.
Okay. Council report. Danny?
I have none.
None. Mark?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Columbus Fall Fest, nothing there?
We have a meeting tomorrow. I mean, next Wednesday, so.
Yeah, nice, nice. Nice folder, nice.
Nice.
Poster.
Poster, there you go. I had a request that somebody was upset, there's no trophies for the car.
We haven't had that in a few years.
Yeah.
Reason we quit it, reason we quit it, it was just a lot of hassle and.
Giving them up? Giving them off?
Hmm?
I have somebody who'll donate the money to buy them.
I- I have somebody too. Dick, was it Dick?
Yep.
Yeah, he called me too. He told me he could donate to the Fall Fest fund and maybe do it next year.
Okay.
Everybody's a winner, Dave.
Yeah.
Appreciation or attendance award.
Show-up attendance. All right, Bill, anything?
I went through the pancake breakfast Sunday, and they did a great job again, so hats off to the Lions. Good job. Other than that, it's pretty quiet.
All right, I don't think I have anything. Public Works Report? Yeah, you guys only come when you want money. Must not want that much, because you just three of you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yeah, Paul's here.
Okay, start with Schedule A.
Schedule A's in the back of the budget.
Schedule A. We'd like to go ahead with the scheduled replacement of the two thousand and six plow truck.
Anybody else wanna look at the budget?
Can we find it there?
Yep.
The amount of two hundred and five thousand plus tax and license.
Is that number still good, or? That was a projection, right? Is it accurate?
It was a projection, and then the guess.
Higher, lower, dead?
It is, they came up with a fifteen hundred dollar tariff and a two-point-five percent increase over estimate that I got earlier.
Still within the two oh-five?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then the...
And then their...
Then the pickup, right?
Yep, then we replace the two thousand and nine Chevrolet pickup.
It should be less than fifty thousand though, right?
It will be pretty close with tax and license.
That with the- was it getting new plow, or what? Plow frame?
This truck is a diesel. So that raises the cost of the vehicle.
Is it gonna be used for plowing then? Will it be used for the salt spray? Is it gonna get undercoated to help keep the corrosion down?
That's...
I think it'd be a good idea.
Not a bad idea. I mean, it's- that spray is- gets all over.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay.
How do you wanna work this? Do you wanna go one at a time, or do you wanna do it as a whole?
Elizabeth, do we- can we- I mean, this is a preliminary budget, preliminary levy anyways, right? So...
Well, this is- this is the Public Works, you know what I mean, advisory group making a recommendation to the council.
So we're gonna make a motion, someone to make a motion to purchase these two vehicles, right?
Well, you're- you're making a motion to accept their recommendation to put it in the capital improvement plan. Once the budget is approved in December, then it gives the authorization for Jim to buy it.
Oh, don't you need to buy it now?
Okay, that was gonna be my question at the end. The lead time on a plow truck is...
Long time.
A year plus.
Yeah.
So the sooner I place an order, it doesn't get paid for till next year, but if you get your name listed, you order it promptly.
The two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has really not been fully collected anyways, right? Because we don't get our disbursements till end of the year.
Nope, the money's in the bank.
But this is for two thousand and nineteen, so we haven't really collected our two thousand and eighteen money for the two thousand and nineteen budget.
We gotta balance up the...
Look at the balance of the...
I understand we have the money, but that particular money hasn't been collected. But we're not gonna...
It'll be collected in December.
It will be collected by the time the truck gets here. So why not order it now? I guess is my question.
You can separately authorize the purchase.
Yeah, which is what I think we should do. What do you guys think?
Definitely. Why wait till another half a winter, a year down the road to use it?
Trucks are getting harder and harder to get. I mean, it's...
Well, that's ready to go for next winter, most likely.
You should be able to follow it for two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
Right. All right, someone wanna make a motion to purchase those two vehicles?
So moved.
Okay.
What the- would that- you need more money, though, for the undercoating? What's undercoating?
I'm sure he'll fit that in there somewhere, I mean...
I can- I can figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I have equipment.
That's the twelve hundred dollars or less. I can't imagine it's very much. Okay, all right, we have a second. A motion, any other discussion? All right.
We had a second?
I thought you seconded.
So this is gonna...
Did Bill second it?
I second it. So the two thousand and nine is gonna- is gonna take the place of the old Ford. The old F-one-fifty's gonna go. That's what's gonna happen.
That'll be...
Old George?
Yeah, George is leaving.
And it's not working.
Right.
And then the Sterling.
The Sterling.
The plow- the plow, yeah.
Okay, so that'll be some revenue somewhere. All right. Hearing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay, move on to the Public Works one-twenty fund.
Do you wanna, as long as they're in the back, do you wanna do the schedule?
Oh, sure. Okay, Schedule B, we wanna increase the gravel budget, five thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars.
Did I get shorted, or what?
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. If not Schedule B, you're in the back.
E. I said E.
He said E.
No, B is a boy.
B is a boy.
Okay.
I heard E.
I heard E too. Can we get the guy in the back room to play that back?
He said B.
Okay, all right, we're on B. So five thousand...
Yes, I'd like to increase the gravel budget by five thousand dollars.
Good.
Twenty-five thousand.
It's always a chopping block, so we'll see what happens when we finally approve it. But okay. Anything else in there, change?
No.
Nothing else on Schedule B is a boy.
It's another one-twenty fund, which is page four.
Increase the small equipment tool fund by five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred. And then increase contract services by twenty thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars for right-of-way tree clearing.
Okay, we're not just doing that ourselves, or is there too much of it, or what?
Well, we do do some, but some of it is just way above and beyond what we were wanting to do so.
Is any of that around power lines, or?
Around power lines and...
Big old trees?
I mean, there's some- there's some big stuff that is more than... And then we also have projects. So hypothetically, next year, we're gonna be doing Notre Dame and one eighty versus a paving project. It would be nice to clear the right-of-way at that point. And we, if we, as the city staff, would not in any way, shape, or form get it done before it's paved, so if we were allowed to do this, we could hide it out, and then, you know, we could have the right-of-way cleared at the same time we pave it.
Okay.
And there's just, I mean, we have a hundred miles of road right-of-way that there's no way that we can make any of that also. Does the year's goal increase get figured in? If this gets to be harder and harder to do.
Okay, what do you guys think on that?
Bill?
I'm okay. I mean, I... Danny?
Yeah, fine.
Mark?
Yep.
Good. All right, so we'll adopt that in our budget when we do everything.
That's basically, that's what we asked.
Okay. Thanks for all your hard work and clarity.
I had a report from a citizen about Jim. He did a good- he went out and seen him. He did a real nice job, was very professional. And this guy's a hard guy to impress, impressed by Jim.
Good old man.
No, I know where you're talking about.
Okay, Public Information Coordinator report?
No report.
No report. Okay, City Administrator report?
We have our budget discussion for two thousand and nineteen, and then- then we also have on the schedule a closed meeting, and I wasn't quite sure what you wanted to take first, but- or how- and if you still wanted to continue in- in that order.
Let's just finish the budget up, as long as the people are here.
Okay.
For the white day. Won't hear about it, because they won't come back.
So just- just as an overview of the- of the budget, what I've given you in your packets is, we talked about the Sheriff's Department contract earlier this evening. I've- I've put those numbers in, so they are reflective in the budget. And I've also only given you the disbursements at this time, so we can talk about disbursements. And once we know what the disbursements are gonna be, then I can plug in the revenue and then finally the levy. So the summary will come next meeting when I have most of the numbers here. If you look at the first page, the first page will have, you know, the proposed two thousand and nineteen budget, and then at the very end of each subtotal, you'll have a red number, and that's the change from last year to this year as far as budget goes. And I've done that throughout the disbursements. And the reason why I have done that is I've had the opportunity to calculate some tax information with the help of our financial, public finance person. And we, in Columbus this year, or from last year to this year, we had an eight percent growth in Columbus as far as tax base. And last year, it was asked of me to do the calculation, as a result of that growth, if nothing else happened, by how much could we raise the budget and have a net zero impact? Last year, it was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the, you know, in that range. This year, we've done the calculation. We've had an eight percent growth. We projected nine- nine percent growth next year. So again, we'll have just as much growth as from last year to this year, from this year to next year. And that brings it to a number in the range of two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So the red numbers do represent the numbers that are the change numbers. What you have within your realm is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars before you'll see a- a tax increase. So looking at the first section, the- the largest increase is in the IT, which is contract services. And that is the way that software and support works now. It used to be where you bought a program, you had the program until you don't- you didn't want to use that program any longer. And that's not how software is issued today. Software is issued by licenses, and by how many- and if it's not by licenses, it's how many seats. So depending on what software you're using and buying will determine what your annual cost to software is. And today, you just can't function without...
Our scanning software's in there too now, right?
Uh, yes, it is.
Yeah, so that adds a little bit.
So it's- it's- but it's everything. It's accounting, it's permit works, it's- it's- we have between five and eight programs today that we function with, whether it's accounting, building permits, Excel, Office three sixty-five, how we administer our email and such. I mean, everything runs on a program, and all are license-based. So that's where you're seeing the significant increase in the first section. Otherwise, the budget is the same as two thousand and eighteen.
Do you wanna go over these one at a time? So if we just do administrative expenses yet, these- these numbers are the twenty-one-nine-eighty that is the changes, sum of all the changes in- in the nineteen budget proposed, right?
So...
So the twenty-one-nine-eighty on section bottom of page one? It's twenty-one...
Twenty-one-nine-eighty is in the section for administrative expenses versus, yes, that's the change. So it's from- from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen's budget.
Yeah.
And that's the primary- the primary place where it's- the fifteen thousand is- is in administrative wages, and I'm proposing the- a fifteen thousand dollar increase overall, and that's where most of the increase is from. The others are just minor increases depending on contracts.
Okay, so page, nothing really on page two. Page three, we have a hundred thousand dollars. That was in capital outlay.
Are you on- are you on city hall expenses?
Yep, three.
That- that remains the same, so it's twenty-six-seven and twenty-six-seven for two thousand and eighteen budget to two thousand and nineteen budget.
Okay, do they have anything else that they wanna?
Those city hall expenses are just, you know, your electricity, gas, phone, trash. The senior center, I also, it remains the same. It was thirty-six-hundred and eighteen, it's thirty-six-hundred and nineteen. It comprises of the liability insurance and repairs. The building inspection, I have not had a chance to analyze. There's a lot of numbers to look there, so that section has not been updated. That entire department self-funds itself, we were- we had significant growth in that department last year, so I don't foresee that it's not funded, but those numbers won't reflect two thousand and eighteen, because Leon went from working eight to one to a full-time equivalent, so the numbers will change from eighteen to nineteen. So we'll see a budget impact, but we won't see a levy impact.
So on page five, JW, you have nothing in there for street signs? Is that- I thought we were on a plan to replace our street signs because of the reflectivity problem. So why is there zero in there? Isn't it zero?
You're on page four?
Yeah. Five, five of ten. Or is it somewhere else?
Well, that's- that's in- that's in transportation.
Different deal.
Yeah. So Public Works street signs would be on page four, and in that, he's got eight thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. Why is it in Transportation Capital?
Transportation Capital is for different types of signs. So Transportation Capital Fund is for more like the roundabout, roundabout lights, signs that we need in- because of projects that we're doing.
Got it.
It's a- it's a different type of signage.
Okay, the fire fund on page nine, that ninety-one thousand includes the- you're able to do all the numbers and see where I...
The Forest Lake Capital, the capital match, so I did talk with the fire chief today. He's going with an estimate of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new equipment, and that gives us- that range is a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is our portion, because it's an estimate. You know what I mean? So he- I went with the middle road, because I didn't go with the low end or the high end in that one. But we, if you look at the three items, so the twenty-two thousand five hundred that we levied last year, we will not have to levy it this year, because that's the last payment of the ladder truck.
Right.
The forty-six thousand is what we levied last year as a capital improvement money or dollars.
Reserve?
So there's a kind of a net, you know, a net of those, and- and so now I have just one item of a hundred and forty thousand. The one forty-two two hundred is the- is the joint powers agreement, fire agreement.
So the...
So the net change there is ninety-one thousand, one-twenty.
Anybody have any other questions?
So I wanna go back to the building inspector's deal. So there's talk that the truck's gonna get replaced in that department too. Where does it- where do the dollars show from what's been held over from the last years?
Yeah, there's a- there's a spreadsheet that- that we have that I can- I can email if you want. I have not had a chance to update it. But what it does is we roll the money over, because we have to account for that money that- within the building department. And that's what we buy computers with and all of the assets in that part- in that department. So if there's enough money in there to purchase the truck, it would come out of that fund. And that's how we initially, in two thousand and five, we paid it. The twenty thousand dollars came out of the building proceeds to purchase the current truck.
Right, and so, but there should be, that- that fund has never gone over.
Throughout the years, that fund, the building department...
Self-funded.
Has been self-funded since I've been here.
Plus.
Plus.
Right, so there should be enough funding in there for a truck, I would think.
Absolutely.
It- it should do its own, pay as you go.
Yep.
Vehicle.
So we've never- we've never borrowed money from elsewhere to pay for the building department. Once they've had the money, we've been able to expend it in the department.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Are you looking for a motion to adopt this? Are you looking for a motion to adopt this preliminary budget, or just, it's just discussion at this point?
This is just discussion tonight, I'll come back at the next meeting with a preliminary levy resolution.
Okay. All right, I think we put a fork in that one. You have anything else?
I don't have any other questions on this.
Anybody else have any questions?
Also has questions.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to a closed meeting. So at this point, we have to close a meeting under Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subsection, subsection 3C.
Oh, and the purpose, Mr. Mayor, is to consider offers on city-owned property, and so that's an appropriate reason under statute to close the meeting.
Yep, so we thank you for your attendance.